Yeah, all right. We'll call to order the Fayette County Board of Education Work Session for May 6th. Can we have a, any changes to the agenda?
No, sir, we're all good for the agenda, would recommend the board.
Can we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Five oh. All right. Dr. Barrow, I'll turn it over to you for our presentations.
First on the agenda is developing highly effective staff. This is part of our goals and model of achievement accountability. And Dr. Turner's going to come and share Goal Three, Performance Two. And...
Good afternoon. Originally, we were scheduled to bring information regarding pathway completion for this month, but I put that schedule together when I was new to this job and didn't realize we would need to wait until the year ended to get that data. So, we're tweaking our schedule just a little bit, and we thought we would bring to you today information on Goal Three, Performance Objective Two, which is developing highly effective staff. Ms. Ray Presley King is here presenting with me. Kim Heron would have been here, but she has her Principals Connection Day in which she is connecting principals and their instructional coaches today to further flesh out those relationships and roles so that whenever they go into next year, they know where they need to improve upon and what's working really well. So, in looking at the information that we're going to present for you here today, if we can get on to the next one, what we wanted to do is give you an idea of all the professional learning that we deliver to our certified staff, and we're also going to give you, we've shared information about our administrative staff. Of course, for us, each school year starts out with new teacher induction, and then where we take everyone who's a new hire in the county and try to bring them into the Fayette County way of doing things. And then it goes on to job embedded professional learning that is school-based, where principals are designing the kind of PL that they need based on what their needs are. Sometimes this is position-specific, such as we've been heavily involved in the Georgia State Coaching Collaborative with our instructional coaches and our digital learning specialists. Ms. Henley has been very involved with PBIS, Early Learning. Ms. Ray Presley King with our Wood of Arts Partnership. And then, of course, we've had Tracy Fleming coming back to work with first-year teachers and first-year administrators. The link to our system-wide professional learning schedule gives you an idea of what we've offered throughout the school year for teachers. So, if that, if you open that link and look in that further, you'll see a long list for for school year 18, 19 of all the things that we've delivered. We think we pretty much have everything on that list, and you can see that. We've also done some work on Learning in the Fast Lane, where we brought in Suzie Pepper Rollins. And then, we did the Primary Grades Ed Camp that Kate Matthews and Kim Heron put together for K-1 and 2 teachers so that those, K-1 teachers especially, could share what was working in terms of our standards-based reporting. And then, of course, we're going to end the year with a great event called the What Works Expo, our WWE, that was initiated by Rosie Gwynn, but it is, it's inclusive of special ed and gen ed teachers. Ms. Presley King, do you want to come and talk about the next slide, which is about our administrative PL?
Absolutely. Our net, when, at the beginning of each year, this is, for me, this is the beginning of the year, which is that first, the second week in July, I mean, I'm sorry, in June. And in June, we actually meet, we bring all of our administrators together. We bring building-level administrators, we bring district-level administrators, school board members, and our admin interns. And the admin interns actually, they're there, they're, they actually, in the past, we have used them kind of to help us with the Admin Institute, but now, they are a part of our our learning team. The, if you have a chance to click on the link, you'll get to see what we did last year. And thank you, Dr. Marchman, for coming and and starting off the day. It started off really early, and thank you, Dr. Marchman, for being there, and Dr. Barrow. But this year, we're going to do the same thing, but this year, last year, we focused on instructional leadership, and this year, we're going to continue focusing on instructional leadership, except for, we are going to now look at the strategic plan and how it connects to school improvement. So, I hope that all of you have a chance to come out on June 11th and 12th. The internship program, which I briefly mentioned before, is when we have a chance to take teacher leaders and give them a, to, give them a chance to look at building-level leadership and decide whether or not they are a good fit for that. That program lasts from January to July, but we actually start interviewing in December. Each year, we choose a different number, usually around six. One year, we had seven. One year, we had four. This year, we're back to six, and it's a great group of individuals. The GLISI, which I'm sure all of you have heard, but the Georgia Leadership Institute for School Improvement, we've been working with them for years, more than 10 years, and they provide a lot of our leadership for our principals and our admin, our other administrators. But the biggest thing is they're now, they, they challenge us to work on a problem when we come. So, we bring a group, and we have, if there's, whether it's working with our guidance counselors, whether it's working with brand-new administrators, they give us a challenge, they ask us to create a SMART goal, and from there, we move on with it. And it's supposed to be something that we work on once we leave there for quite some time. And the last thing that I want to highlight is that every month in this room, we have Admin Council. And for Admin Council, we bring all of the principals together and all of the district leaders together. And we, lately, actually, we usually have PL, but sometimes it's not every month, but this year, thanks to Dr. Turner, we have PL every single month. And that PL, this year, we focused on visible, visible learning for literacy, because literacy is a big goal of ours. And we used Hattie's work, Hattie Frye and Fisher. And it was actually nice, because years ago, we talked about focusing on one book and maintaining that focus throughout the year. So, again, it was instructional leadership, and I think it's, it's really paid off. We read the book, then we, we delivered the professional learning one chapter at a time, and there were only five chapters, but we were able to spend more time on some other chapters. And actually, I think that that was it, unless you have questions about admin professional learning. And then, the last slide just get, basically gives you an idea of some of the other forums that we offer, Reimagining Special Education Services. And I have to give Rosie Gwynn a lot of support and a lot of kudos, because, my goodness, she, we took what, we took a moment to really focus on where we are and where we want to be, and we brought together a group of educators from all levels and all schools and just worked out some problems. And I think that we have wonderful solutions. And if you just take a look at the rest of the list, I don't want to hold you and tell you about each one, but a lot of great things are happening here in Fayette County for professional learning, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have. But if there's one thing, Kay, if I could get you to go back one slide to system-wide professional learning schedules, if you don't click on anything in this presentation, please click on that, because there you get a chance to see just how much the Instructional Department, the Curriculum Department, just all of the different things we do at each level, and that's throughout the entire year. Okay? Questions?
I attended many of these programs as a principal, and I know you all do a great job with that, the Administrative Institute and GLISI and all those, wonderful job, you all do fantastic. The only thing, and this is not a criticism, but I know, and there's never enough time, but for new teachers, I would have loved to have had the new teacher in my building more than just like the one day. And I know a lot of times, that's out of your control, but, and again, I can only speak to the high school level, but I know at the high school level, bringing in the department chair to work with them and me trying to work with them, the one day goes by like that.
And, and I, I have to agree with you on that. In the past, this past year, we actually gave them an entire day, so they, they didn't come to us and then come to you, they spent the entire day, but even that's not enough. There's so many things that we want, it's almost like we're pulling, it's tug-of-war, because the new teachers, there's so many things that we want to teach them. But if we, if we could have two, that would be wonderful. We have four days, and we give one day to the schools. And I wish I could, you know, my magic wand and give you two, and maybe one day, you all can help us with that.
Just one more comment on the professional learning for administrators, those Administrative Council PL sessions, you know, Ms. Presley King said thanks to Dr. Turner, but I want you to know that the heavy lift of designing, developing, and delivering that PL every month came from my core curriculum team, which are the five coordinators, Ms. Presley King, Ms. Heron, Ms. Gwynn, the ECS coordinators, I think we had maybe one or two other folks that I might be leaving off that team. But they, I said, this is what we need to do, we need to build capacity for instructional leadership, and they took the ball and really ran with it, and I just got to watch great stuff happen, so I appreciate them very much. And I would also want you to know that even though we have two people in charge of professional learning, really, everybody in the Curriculum Department participates in professional learning and in school improvement. Those aren't tasks that are designated just to two people, so, and thanks very much to my group for all the hard work with professional learning and building both teacher and administrative capacity.
Just a comment as well, Dr. Turner, Ms. Presley King, the, I think if you have an opportunity to go into and check the links, you can see a tremendous amount of effort and time has been given to this, and we think that's critically important. So, when we talk about developing our new calendar, and I certainly want to, we'll speak to that later in the agenda, finding time, making time for professional learning is critically important. And I'll say this, if, with Ray here and Kim not here, if that's all these two ladies did was professional learning, they'd still have more than their plate full, but they each have multiple other hats they wear, you know, the Fine Arts Program, Title II, you know, so we're trying to wrap all of that into that. But it's critically important, and you look at the, the world of business, they're always training and retraining their people. We don't go and get a degree and then we're all done. It's a, it's a constant learning process for all of us, both teachers, administrators, support personnel. It's critically important that we continue that lifelong learning piece. So, I, I think probably professional learning this year probably has been the best that I've seen in my six years here. It's been very strong, been very focused, and I want to commend both you ladies for that effort.
Thank you very much.
And we'll extend that to Ms. Heron.
Yeah.
I have a question or comment, I don't know which one it is, but I've been to the administrators and professional learning, and they'll do a phenomenal job. It's amazing how excited people are and how much they actually learn there. And I'm sure the teachers' professional learning training is equally as good. And one thing you didn't mention here is our support staff. And this is just second-hand information, it might not, might not even be true, but I just hear from time to time that our support staff really need some training in things as basic as Excel and Word and Adobe and even our internal databases. And I just want to make sure that they have the competency they need also, and is that part of your training program?
It is, and we, we focus mainly on certified staff and administrators for this presentation, but a lot of the learning, professional learning for classified staff is more digitally-based, more online. There are, for example, if you want to learn how to use the Google suites of applications, there are modules that classified staff can sign up for and participate in and learn how to use those different tools that are there. If they need more training in Excel spreadsheets, because even though we have Google Sheets, we still use Excel quite a bit, that, that is there for them. Tyler Mune's training is ongoing. So, we do have training there for them, and then if they need something specific and they come to us and they say, "I really need help with this," then we figure out a way to get them the training that they need.
And with our paraprofessionals, we typically try to, the instructional ones, that we typically try to bring those in, the same training that the teachers receive as well.
And we encourage parapros to participate in school-based professional learning.
Yeah. And I know our bus drivers, they, they do their professional learning together all throughout the year, so clearly, it, it's something that we want to continue to do, and specifically, if there's a, an employee group, I know our nurses have professional learning, if there's a, if there's...
The specific question I get quite frequently is somebody will call a school, and they can't get information that's easily accessible on our internal databases, because the person that answered the phone didn't know how to access that information. And I just, might be one person at one school, but I just wanted to raise the awareness, I guess, and make sure that all of our staff have the training they need to handle the phone calls they get.
Thank you.
Next on the presentation agenda is some work that we've just started this recently over the last couple of months. It deals with an opportunity to provide scholarships for very bright students in our district that may not have the wherewithal, the financial support, or even the knowledge in how to pursue post-secondary opportunities. And Mr. Swett and Ms. Gibbs, after talking with the folks that head this program up, Brad Bryant and others, we had some discussion here, and it's certainly something that I left a handout on your seat in, in the board workroom, but I think that's part of your presentation as well. You can see that we're one of the few counties that had not actually taken advantage of that. There's no particular reason for that, other than the fact, we already have a lot of students that are going to college anyhow, but when we say all students, we mean all students. So, if we've got kids that, or young people that want to go to school and have the desire to work hard and get there, we want to provide a way for them to get there. So, Virginia and Sam, if y'all want to come speak to this, any at all, we've got the presentation for you. It'll be pretty, at a high level, and if you have questions, certainly feel free to ask Virginia.
Let's draw that, how about that? Is that better? All right, great. As Dr. Barrow said, I want to keep this very high-end and really address any questions that you have, but at its core, as Dr. Barrow indicated, this is really a scholarship targeted towards low-income but academically promising students, but that may need some additional either academic supports or social type of supports. And so, the idea is to identify these students as rising eighth graders and through an application process. Once the students are actually selected, they will be given both an academic tutor or an academic mentor, typically either a counselor or somebody in the school, so a teacher, as well as an external mentor. And we intend to use our Friends Mentoring Program, which is well-established in our system, to actually provide that support. The students will go through their high school, continuing with those supports, and the goal is to really hopefully identify students that have promise, but that need that a little bit extra. And in particular, in our, I think in the heart of this program, if we can identify perhaps some first-generation college students, and then make sure that we're really providing those things to, when they graduate from high school, they need to have at least a 2.5 GPA, they need to have good behavior and good attendance, but at that point, they will have the opportunity to have a $10,000 scholarship. And the beauty of this program is that both colleges and many of our technical schools will actually either match or double-match that amount. These students, because of the way some of the qualifications for this scholarship, they will also be eligible for Pell Grants. So, very easily, they can take this $10,000 and leverage that into 40, 50, $60,000 debt-free. And so, we're excited not only to be able to give those scholarships at the end of the day, but also to be able to provide the supports from here to there. The actual $10,000 in the first year is provided through the Georgia Student Finance Organization. In subsequent years, our district, because of how we fall in the state, will be asked to actually provide half of that through working with our businesses in our community. And I will tell you from my position, I feel that part of it is going to be exceptionally doable. So, in other words, we'll have local partners donate $5,000, and then the state will match that with another 5,000 for the $10,000. We can have as many as eight scholars named each year, and our hope is that we'll actually be able to do that for September, which is when our first crop would be eligible. And if we're able to do that, we'll actually have a signing ceremony, just like we do for our college, or our high school athletes and those types of things, but for our eighth graders that are going into this Georgia REACH Scholarship Program. That is a very fa, fast synopsis of it, but I'm happy to answer any questions or fill in any details that I haven't covered.
I think it's a great deal. We've already had, I know Virginia and Sam have already met with some of our community people, we've actually had one of our colleagues, banking colleagues, that participated in this over in Clark County, and he's moved here with BB&amp;T, and he's already raised his hand and said, you know, "We're going to help, we'll support." So, I don't think it's going to be a hard thing for us, and it's going to help a lot of our bright kids that maybe just don't have the knowledge base or wherewithal. And there's a selection process. I know we'll be meeting with our guidance counselors, and it's not somebody, "We're going to pick you because we like you," or anything like that. It's truly those kids who are most attentive and deserving, and we'll have a strong pool, and then we'll pick from the best.
So, how many do we, how many slots, if you will, do we get?
Eight, a maximum of eight. And so, we'll go through, take the applications, go through, making sure that there are some specific criteria, make sure that those applications match the criteria, and then our goal is to have this Advisory Council actually interview the students and then make the final...
And these are rising eighth graders?
Rising eighth graders.
And we'll work with them all through their high school career there. In some schools I know, my alma mater, Georgia Southern is one, University of Georgia, they do that double-match, so it really does give young people an opportunity to go to school and not have tons of debt when they get out. And so, we're excited about the opportunity. Doesn't cost us anything other than just investing in our kids, and that's what we do anyhow.
And Dr. Barrow, Virginia mentioned the $10,000 in the match and the possibility of Pell Grant, but if they have, if they qualify for HOPE, those are additional funds, so it could push on up there to 70 to 80 thousand dollars.
Yeah. So, money does not have to be an object to get a college education. That's, that's what we want to try to get to for these kids.
I, I understand something you said. So, we're going to raise $5,000 from local donors? It's not taxpayer money, right?
That's correct.
And then, the state will donate another $5,000?
Technically, the Georgia Student Finance is raising funds on their end as well.
They're raising private funds?
Correct.
Okay, so that, that $10,000 per student's all private funds?
I...
Your understanding?
I, I'm, I'm not sure I can say that definitively from a local standpoint. It would be all outside, not school board funds.
It's, the board's not putting any money into this.
Correct.
I can answer that pretty...
Well, then you said something about next year, or in subsequent years.
Yes.
Same, same situation. We'll be working with business partners.
So, the very first year for this coming September's group, the Georgia Student Finance will put the full $10,000 in, and so, it gives us basically a year...
So, we got a year to raise money?
Correct.
So, we got a year to raise $40,000?
That's correct. There's no penalty if in subsequent years, for some reason, our local community is not in a position to do that. There's no penalty if we don't have all eight scholars, other than lost opportunity, but I will be very surprised if we're not able to actually accomplish that.
We should be able to raise that money tomorrow afternoon. We have a very generous community.
Yeah.
And then, I'm just going down the list. So, when they match and double-match, is that also coming from that same donation fund?
That's the actual university or the technical school, and there's a list later in the presentation of the specific...
Yeah. It comes from their scholarships, their, their foundations, however they issue funds to students.
I think it's the next to the last slide, or two from the last slide, right there.
Then there's another...
That's, and you'll see double-match or match. Basically, the institutions need to be HOPE-qualified or HOPE-eligible. It's State of Georgia, this is a State of Georgia program, but...
So, that's not tax money either? That's, they're going in their private foundations to grab that money?
Again, I, I can't, I'm not knowledgeable enough to speak for that.
And then, this last $20,000, is that coming out of my pocket anyway? I, I know some of this money is going to come out of my pocket somehow, I'm just trying to figure which, which spot's coming out in terms of either a Georgia State taxpayer or a local taxpayer. And, you know, so many organizations and foundations, and is, is all of this money private foundation money that's raised from the private sector, or...
I can speak to the local plan. Again, I, I, I can't speak to the state piece of it, but from a local standpoint, our 100% of the match will come from non-taxpayer funds in, in our community.
Yeah, it's not so much the 5,000 as the 60,000 that I'm curious about. How much of that am I going to be on the, get collected from me and, you know, the Georgia taxpayers? I don't know. I, I guess I, I can't tell if this is a...
Some of it's HOPE money, right?
Yeah, yeah.
That's tax dollar, but, I mean, you know, you can research this.
Yeah, they're...
I'm researching right now.
There's lots of, and like I said, we're a little bit late in the game coming to this as a county. You look at all the other counties, and I'm not saying we do something just because other counties do it, but...
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, I just wonder who's paying for it? Are we paying for it, or is my neighbor's paying for it, or, I don't, I don't know? That's the question that I would...
Virginia, on the rubric for those eight spots is, without having you explain it all, is, is income the highest category or academic achievement the highest category, or are they equal weight?
So, the income is, is basically a requirement piece of it. From the academic standpoint, 2.5 GPA is what the REACH Georgia...
See, I guess I picture a model where there's 150 applicants for these eight spots, right? This is very lucrative.
Right.
It's amazing. So, once you meet the income bar, then it's on the merit of your application to get the award?
That, that's correct, and that's part of the reason I think the best practice is, is to actually have an engaged community advisory that will interview the students and knowing that these are seventh-grade students applying and their parents. And so, really, being able to not only see what's on paper, but also to have a chance to understand sort of the interests, the aspirations, and the rest of the story as well. So, there are some specific requirements, they do have to be a U.S. citizen or able to have legal residency, that's a requirement. They do need to be attendance-wise, they can't be truants, and, and then certainly behavior, there are specific behavior requirements, so there will be a look in to make sure that they are behaving well and continue to behave well through their high school years. They have to be, they, they can't have been convicted of a crime or a drug offense or those types of things. So, I do think one of the preference areas in selection is if, if we do identify students that are first-generation college attendees, I think that's part of the heart of, of the scholarship as well.
I'm, I'm sure we'll come up with eight outstanding candidates.
We have met with our middle school seventh-grade counselors already, one from each of our schools, and I think they are trying to get the word out and to, to get in some applications to make sure that our families know about it and get those applications started.
Good deal.
Great.
Any other questions? We'll keep you posted as we move along through this, and at some point in time, I suspect those young people, we might get to meet them personally once we get to that point. So, we're excited about the opportunity to offer it. So, thank you, Virginia.
Thank you so much.
Those are all of our presentations. Mr. Hollowell, we can move on to Superintendent's Report. If you're ready to go there, good deal. Mr. Sanders, Mr. Satterfield, if y'all want to come up, I, I would like to say this with regard to the facilities update. If you have any questions there, we're happy to answer those for you, but the thing that I want to capitalize on and speak to is, yesterday we had the opportunity to have the dedication for the Fayette County High School Auditorium. I think it was a wonderful celebration. I know several of you were able to, to be in attendance, and I think it was a glorious celebration of our young people and their talents and the quality of our instructors, and not to mention, you know, when the orchestra was playing, I closed my eyes and I thought I was in the New York Philharmonic Orchestra. It was really, really strong. It was great. So it turned out well. Our architect was there, our construction people were there. It was really a great community event, and appreciate the board. I, in fact, I, y'all hadn't fussed at me yet, but I asked all of our board, past and present, to stand and let the community recognize our board, because we couldn't do this work without you, and we appreciated that support. So, Mike, I may have stolen some of your thunder, but any other facility update highlights?
That was number one on my list.
There you go. Well, we're moving right along then.
We just about finished up on, on the last summer's projects as far as the punch list. They're wound down, and I expect that we'll receive the final payout on the Stars Mill, Rise Star Peoples, and probably the auditorium within the month. They've wound those down. Fayette County High School will be renovating the bottom floor of that facility this summer. Had a coordination meeting with the, the high school staff, principal and assistant principals just this morning, so we're, we're gearing up for that. McIntosh High School addition continues to roll along. It appears we should finish up sometime this month. They're, they're in good shape there. We've been working pretty diligently the last month on the security vestibules. They're coming along real well. I, I would think by probably middle of, end of June, they'll be completely done. Torrance Construction's doing a good job there. Torrance is also doing the Sandy Creek, Sandy Creek Film Lab workforce, and shortly after spring break, they started demolition work there, and look forward to them putting it back together, and we'll, we'll finish that up this summer. Last week, we poured the foundation for the first of our band towers. Got that in at Fayette County High, and the actual tower is supposed to ship in in about two weeks, so we expect by first part of June that that will, will be completed. Working hard, the architects are working on the Oak Grove design for the additions and renovations there, and also working on the Stagecoach Middle School design, working on those drawings. We got the RFP out on the streets right now, looking forward to getting in those proposals next Tuesday from a number of contractors, and then the committee will be reviewing those and bringing a couple names of some contractors to the board for, for them to review. And we're getting close to starting on the connector at North Fayette. The contractor's gotten all their stuff ordered, so they can hit the ground running that last week in May, we'll get cranked up there.
Good deal.
So looking forward to another busy summer. May not be quite as busy as last summer, but that's a good thing, too. So.
Any questions for Mr. Satterfield, Mr. Sanders, about any of the projects? I will say this, and I, I talked with Mike about this this morning, the, the dedication plaque for the auditorium, if you didn't see that, we had it, but we discovered a misspelled name, so we didn't want to put that up. It, it didn't come from us, but we did find that, so we, that should be up within the next week or two when they get to it.
They said it was about six day turnaround to get, get the plaque redone, but we had one too many S's somewhere.
Somebody's name, huh? Good deal. But that'll be up shortly, and, and anyhow, any other questions for Mr. Satterfield?
That's great stuff. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Just a little bit of follow-up. I know that we've had our math textbook adoption presentation. Ms. Troutman, our math coordinator and Dr. Turner have been working with that. We need to let that lay out on the table for 30 days. We couldn't quite get it in before this work session, so we're going to actually bring that back to you at the May 20th meeting. And Dr. Turner, we talked a little bit. I, I haven't gotten any specific comments or conversations or any feedback. Have you and/or Ms. Troutman received any information on that regard?
I talked with Ms. Troutman today. She said so far she's received one parent evaluation, and it was positive, so generally no comment from the public on that.
I've seen a lot of people looking through the material out here in the front, but we'll keep you posted on that kind of feedback if, if we get it. But we'll hopefully bring this over to the board, action item recommendation on the 20th. Any questions there? If not, I'll move on down to the attendance and enrollment reports, and this was, snapshot was taken at the very end of April, and we're actually at 20,354 students. That's actually over the 200 mark, 204 students more than we were last year at the same time. I think that's good, good sign. And so we're, we're growing a little bit, and that's the good kind of growth that you'd like to have. You know, I went through and looked at all the schools. We have some where there's increase, some decrease, and we just track that. I don't know that there's any particular reason for that to happen, but clearly we're headed in the right direction as far as regrowth is concerned. Any comments or questions? Okay, I'll move on to item D then. We're going to get through with this agenda here real quick. It's a good thing. Moving through, we have been working on the calendar preparation. One of the things that we do do is have our employees have a chance to actually vote, but one of the things that I'd ask Mr. Swett and Dr. Turner to do this time around was to actually push, push out surveys for the community and the parents to provide feedback. We've got this survey for the 2021, and this'll also be the 2122 school year. We'll be pushing this out, but I wanted you to actually see the survey. We'll take a look at all this data, and once it's in and compiled, we'll certainly share that with you, so that people have an opportunity in the community to, we'll, we'll certainly take that into consideration. We've given some rationale about where it is and what we like, what we don't like, and certainly we'll take that into our consideration and feedback. Any comments there?
That's good.
Okay, next we move on to an item that may take a little more discussion, and come on out, Mr. Gray, our budget development update. I know that we continue to work on this as we get more information from our revenue streams and looking at our expenses and recommendations from staff, and we know that we're going to have some increase in the budget primarily because if we didn't look at anything else other than the $3,000 teacher raise, that's going to be between six and seven million dollars just with that one item. And so we're still working on this. Our goal is to try to bring something to the board that we can somewhat tentatively approve, hopefully at the, near the end of May. But I'm going to be quiet and let Tom walk you through this, and we'll be happy to answer any questions for you.
Okay. Not a whole lot has changed on this worksheet since the last time we met. Your state revenue at the top of page one comes out to 11 and a half million dollars, 100, yeah, 111.5 million dollars. The local revenues is 116.5 is the estimate now that, with the increase in the digest that we expect at this point based on the information we received from the Tax Assessor's Office. So that'd give us a total revenue stream during the year of about 228 million dollars with our projected fund balance of just under 30 million dollars at the end of this year. On page two, you have our baseline start of the current salaries and budget. At the top is about 192 million dollars, and then you have the increases. There you see that first group of increases are all increases and based on their employee's staff, the TRS, the certified salary schedule, and the 2% COLA. Those, all those items add up to about 9.5 million dollars in increases. The next group is the allotment increases, which are the positions that were added to the school-based allotment sheets, and those total 1.6 million dollars. Below that, you have the program and support additions that we've gone through with the different schools and departments and executive cabinet discussed and tried to pare down what we thought were the priorities of those. And in that area, you have about 1.3 million dollars, 1,256,000 dollars in estimated increases in those positions, so. And I did go through and look, and, you know, you have about, not every one of those additions, our actual position additions, because some of it is just changing supplements or where the person's located and things like that, but there's about 12 and a half positions that will be school-based there, and then there's some adjustment, like two additional central office positions, a position we're converting from federal to, to local, and then a couple of positions that are being reclassed or retooled. So those are the additions right now. There are some additional positions that we've looked at and still haven't made a decision on yet or haven't made a recommendation on that aren't on this, reflected on this, but, and those are still pending and, you know, having those discussions with, at the district level and, you know, with the board as to what needs to be, what's appropriate.
And, and to, to also jump in here, I know we've gotten a few questions that we're pulling information on. I want to share that information with all of our board. It's, this is the good time to ask those questions right now, because we need to be able to share the thinking and the rationale behind that if we're recommending, you know, some additional slots.
I just, I just had a quick question about the, the $3,000 increase at six to seven million, is that's our local portion for benefits?
Well, that's what it cost us, and we're estimate, in, in not understanding exactly everything they're doing on the funding formula side, because they haven't released that information. They've just given us an estimate. But if you look back on the first page on the revenue, I'm estimating that about 75% of the cost of that is being funded through the QBE earnings. So you'll see at the top, funding for teacher salary increase is estimated at 75% of estimated cost. So they're increasing our QBE earnings on page one, nine million dollars. And that includes the $3,000 increase in the state teacher salary schedule. It does not include TNE.
Training and experience.
The TNE, so we haven't seen those final numbers from the state as to how they're getting to the funding.
But we're going to have to pay for the benefits.
Correct, yes.
How much do we think that might be?
Well, I would say if you, if you look at the total cost of what it's, the increase is, which is, sorry, 6.2 million dollars, we're, we're probably having the funds about 25% of that is my estimate at this point.
Okay.
Directly, yeah. And that would include FICA, which we pay all of that, and the increase in TRS. So all of those additions above our baseline staffing level at this point is about 12.6 million dollars would be going into next year. Then if you look on page three, you see we have some operating increases, some for the schools based on just having some additional students. We're allocating additional money for that, some changes in the departmental budgets, which include fuel increase, and we do have to pay for some of the math book, textbook adoption in the general fund because of the type of purchase it is. And then we have additional pre-K classes, ROTC, and some SMP stuff that's adding, plus I think there's some additional capital in that non-departmental at this point. So total increase in the budget would be 15.3 million dollars this year compared to last year. So that would still leave us, even after having our budgetary reserve balance of 22 million dollars, 20, almost 23 million dollars, about 6.9 available in the additional budgetary reserve. So, I don't know if there are any more questions. I had the next steps that we would take at this point is continuing to talk about the position requests that we have to see if, you know, what we're able to, to work with inside the budget. May 20th, which is the next board meeting, we would need to have a comment section for the public to make comments and, to the board about the budget, so they could have some input, have input. That'll be the first of two sessions that we would need to have open. At the time, we would also have the tentative budget ready for adoption by the board, and that will be the first time that you vote on it. You've actually voted on it twice. You vote on it two times, and then you voted on a third time when you adopt the millage rate, but you have to have two votes on the budget. So that would be May 20th for the first one, and then June 3rd, we would have the second public comment session, that's had to work session, and then June 17th, we would have the final adoption of the budget. So we can make changes between the 20th and 17th, as long as we're not too drastic. We don't have to do any additional advertising or start over again, but that is the schedule we're at, at this point.
And those changes can be either up or down, so.
That's correct.
Just looking at that.
Yeah.
But we're getting close to being able to share what we think is a real solid budget with the board, and, and what those last few positions that we're pulling some additional information on, trying to do some value judgment in what kind of impact it'll have on the district, both pro and con, and then ultimately, we can bring our best recommendations to the board and look forward to the tentative adoption.
Hey, Tom.
Yes.
On page, on page two.
Yeah.
You got the total personnel, 191, then it's 2.4 in that list, and you just said that the 6.2 million's going to cost us, I don't know, estimated by 1.6 in local funds, about 25% of that? And I bet some of those numbers are half, and some of them are 100%, but how much of that 12.6 million would you say is locally funded?
Well, I'll put it this way. We are, when you're talking about any of the, you know, positions that you're looking that we're adding down below here, whether it's the two gifted teachers or the, the one ESOL teacher, or any of those additional, those are all above what the QBE is funding, because we've already allotted more teachers than what the QBE base formula, so we're really picking up all of those, except for maybe, you know, you can make the argument on the gifted, that we don't have as many gifted teachers as assigned as we actually earn, so we, we try to make that adjustment because of that. So, but overall, you know, we have more teachers than what we earn on the QBE formula.
So probably about 10 million of that is easily local funding?
Yes.
Thanks.
I wouldn't argue with that. You know, it's hard to say when, you know, because of the way they handle the, the training, what they call TNE, training and experience, at this point, they've only given us the aggregate number, they haven't given us the details of how they, how they get into that. You know, so they do fund some of the TRS, they do fund, they fund the Medicare on the teacher salary schedule, they don't fund any FICA. We had to pick up all the FICA.
Well, and, and one thing, too, Dr. Marksman, I think this kind of goes to your question, the, we do have a number of locally funded teachers. Most all of that, I won't say 100%, but most all of that goes to meet the class size expectation numbers that the board has set for us. So, you know, we can always increase class size and cut back on numbers of teachers, but that has not been the sentiment of this board, at least during my time here. So we, we, we can always operate less expensively, but there's going to be contingencies that we have to look at where the, the class size is going to have to go up if we have fewer numbers of, of teachers and, and more kids in those classrooms. So that's something to keep in mind as we're going through. So that's something to keep in mind as we're going through this.
You know, I guess one way to look at this too is if you look at the additions, you know, there's 16 certified staff in the allotment sheets. If you take, even if you take out the seven that are ECS lead teachers, that's nine. And then we have 12 and a half in the rest of the list, you know, that's 20, over 20 positions. We didn't earn 20 more positions in the QBE formula this year. So, and I don't know what the number is that we actually earned was increased, but, so that does increase the local funding, I think is the question.
And I think, you know, and we look at the different program areas and categories, depending upon how we serve our kids and, and how we staff that, we technically can earn more gifted funding, for example. We've got more gifted students than we're actually earning funds for, but we've got to have gifted teachers in order to be able to do that. And, you know, that's not a one-to-one wash, I can tell you upfront, but a lot of, that would be what we consider to be forward funding. We have to pay for the teachers upfront and then we get the FTE increase in the following year. And that, you know, that's, that's just the cost of doing business in, in the way the funding formula works for us.
Under the Director of Federal Programs, what do you mean there by funding analysis pending?
Well, we've been trying to determine the different ways that, that might affect the general fund based on how it's structured. There are some things that can be done that would require us, depending on how we structure it, would require us to pick up the whole amount. There are other things that can be done that we would pick it up based on the, the time amount split. So that decision hasn't been completely vetted on how we would handle that. So we kind of tried to pick a middle of the road number based on what we think, you know, might happen if, if some of the time is general fund, some of the time is all Title I or, you know, and the other federal programs. The problem with having any of that money still pay for those positions is that's less money going to the Title I schools. So we were trying to fund it such that there was more Title I money going directly to the Title I schools, trying to maximize that.
And then I just, a question about the ROTC teacher. Is that for a new program at Whitewater?
That's actually an, an expansion at Fayette County High School. Their program is at a point where the Army is willing to fund another teacher. They don't fund all of it, but they are, they're willing to fund another teacher.
I have a question. I'm still forming an opinion on this, so this is just, this isn't a question for Tom, I guess, but I was talking to the superintendent, a former superintendent of one of the larger school districts in Georgia about the academic research concerning school size, class size. And we had a really hard time finding any academic research that shows that class size is a significant factor in student performance. And there might be research we couldn't find, but I was talking to a guy that's been a superintendent for decades and I've done my own research. And I know that's not true in every class and every situation. So I guess my question to the staff would be what, you know, if we were going to change our numbers, I'm not saying that I'm recommending that.
Sure.
But if we were going to change those numbers, where is it critical? Where, where is class size critical? Is it kindergarten, first grade? Is it, you know, some high school class or, because it's hard to find academic research that says it's critical across the board. And so if we want to make research-based decisions, I'm doing my research.
Sure.
But, so I would like some feedback on that sometime during this budget process.
Okay.
That'd be great.
And I'll say one thing related to that, a lot of these additions you see are not just trying to affect class size. I would say they're also trying to affect program offerings.
Right.
Any other questions? All right, thanks, Tom.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Looking at item 4F, we've been contacted by the Fayette County Development Authority. They're offering a training session for elected officials. Since we have three of our board members that have shared that they would like to attend or can attend this training session, certainly wanted to make sure that we put this in the minutes and that we've made this announcement here publicly, that we will have three of our board members attending this session. There's no Board of Education Business conducted at this time. This is learning about what the Development Authority is trying to do in recruiting business and industry to our community and what role we may play as elected officials, what role you board members play. And we're looking forward to receiving the training and seeing what we can learn with the other governmental, I don't know who the other governmental officials are that will be attending, but I know that all of the municipalities and county government have been invited to attend. So we'll, we'll certainly keep the rest of the board informed. And if you have any questions about it as we go through the training, please feel free to call us. Item 4G deals with the Georgia School Boards Association. Did want to confirm that we submitted our exemplary board application. Kay sent that, I guess, on the 30th. And we'll be looking forward to the review of GSBA and, and I suspect we'll have some good news maybe in June when we're at the GSBA Spring Conference there. Last but not least, I did want to let them know as far as our superintendent report was concerned, is that the Hanover Survey for alumni and graduating seniors is currently out right now. And I haven't done a, a check recently about the number of students that had completed the survey. And I did check early just after we had pushed it out. We actually had more alumni responding than we have this year, current seniors. I suspect they've been busy taking finals and taking AP exams and those kinds of things. But we'll, as soon as that survey is done and completed, we'll give you a executive summer report. That should be sometime later this summer. And I think this is the, I believe the third, fourth, third or fourth year that we've actually done this. So we're beginning to get some longitudinal data over time. So that'll be interesting to see. Okay, any other questions on the superintendent's report? If not, we'll move on to personnel and we have a personnel report submitted to you. I'd like to recommend all those individuals to the board after going through. These are some of our principalships and assistant principalships and would like to recommend that to the board.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Are we done hiring our full staff for next year?
Yeah, we're close. There are a couple of other assistant principal positions that may come open.
Head person at every school with this vote.
Yes, sir.
We have our head person at every school with this vote.
I think we're in good shape. Yes, sir.
Call the question. All in favor? Five oh.
Okay, while, while we're here, I would like to at least acknowledge a couple of folks that are in the audience. I, I see them there and first of all, I'm, I'm going to embarrass them here just a little bit. Ms. Erin Angelo is here. She's been a great principal for us and she'll be going to Braylon Elementary School. So Erin, wave and smile. There you go. Ms. Kathy Smith, I see her out in the audience. She'll be going to Rising Star Middle School is our new principal there. And there are others and we'll, we'll make those announcements as we get out, but I did, I saw those two ladies out in the audience. Congratulations to both of them.
Congratulations.
We are excited about both our internal hires and external hires. I mentioned Ms. Angelo moving from Mentor to Braylon. A gentleman by the name of John Gibbous will be coming to us. He'll be, actually be at our May meeting and he'll be moving into the principalship at Sarah Hart Mentor. So we're excited about the folks coming on board and look forward to great things from these individuals. Last but not least is one action item. We had this project discussed with you. We had folks from the county here, but this is the Kenwood Road Schools Zone. This is an intergovernmental opportunity for us to work with the county. We have some traffic issues out in front of North Fed Elementary where our folks feel like there's some, it's a little bit hazardous and we feel like we need to be able to try to correct that. This is, I think, a great thing. It's a, a good example of intergovernmental collaboration and cooperation. The county is going to do most of the work. The board has been asked to pay for part of that. Our portion is about just under 180,000 dollars. The county's portion is a good bit more than that. But I think it's a win-win for our kids and, and our parents and it will certainly keep us much safer. So we wanted to put that on the, on the table and, and recommend the board approve. The county's already approved this. They've already signed off on their share.
Need a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or discussion?
Mr. Sanders, did I leave anything off? I, I think it's pretty much all in the, in the agreement.
It's all there and I, I do have Courtney and Joe here with us who presented before if there are any questions, but it's, it's as it was. And they did note in the email that the dollar figures that have been presented, it's with them bidding it out. If there's a possibility of doing some internal work, it may save some money there. So I'll just point that out as well.
Okay.
So this is the PD and the curves?
Actually putting that turn-in road up. It's on our property, so it'll, it'll revert to us, it belongs to us, but the county's going to help put it in for us.
You showed us the map recently?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I did, yeah.
So make sure we're talking about the same thing?
Yes.
All in favor? Five oh.
Okay, moving on to information items. One of the things that I had the pleasure of, of having a conversation with representative customer service individual from the Georgia Lottery Corporation. And I think these numbers are absolutely amazing when you look at the lottery that actually started in 1994. And initially when that was started, you had pre-K, you had HOPE, you also had some capital money primarily dealing with technology. That lasted for about a year or two and the income wasn't as much as what they had hoped for. So the technology went away, but pre-K and HOPE scholarship, HOPE grant monies has remained consistent. And over that time, from 1994 to 2018, the total return to the county from the proceeds is over 603 million dollars. That's our HOPE scholarship, that's our pre-K money. You can see the, the retailers, they actually get about 6%. So the people who sell those here in our, in our county, they've earned over 35, just under 36 million dollars. You see what's been paid out. You see the number of HOPE students. That's almost 27,000 students that have possibly benefited. You can see the amount of HOPE dollar pre-K and I just thought that'd be interesting. We're getting some return on that and whether you purchase tickets or not, you can see those people who do have helped a lot of kids get through school. So it's probably one of the more successful programs in the country and.
Do they still provide capital dollars for us? I see so there's some capital out there, is that?
Yes, sir, no, so that, the capital dollars, that's kind of pretty much gone away. We do have a little bit in pre-K monies where they'll actually provide some things for the classroom, that kind of stuff.
That's nothing we could apply for.
Yes, sir. No, I'd love, it'd be nice if we could tap into that.
Dr. Bayer, I think if you noticed a footnote on that.
Yeah.
It's, it ended in 2001.
Yeah, I was going to say, it didn't, it didn't last too long. That's, it was great while it lasted, but there just wasn't enough to, the HOPE, the scholarship piece was so positive that, you know, we, that's pretty much ate up all the money, that and pre-K.
I just want to thank the gamblers for helping my kids get through school.
Yeah, I hope, hope so, hope so. Last but not least, I know one of the things that I've already mentioned, Hanover Research, that's a, you know, a company we partner with to help do research for us. And I know one of the things that you have asked and, and board members have asked about, how can we close achievement gaps and help those kids that are not where they need to be? And we have a pretty comprehensive research package that we had asked Hanover to work for us. I think there's some really good suggestions in there. We've shared this information with all of our instructional staff, our building principals across the board. And certainly we want to take good research and put it to use. So I thought I'd share that whole report with you. If you have any questions about that, please feel free to, to ask those. I do have a need to go into executive session for some property discussion and also some personnel issues I need to bring to the board's attention.
Need a motion to go to executive session to discuss property and personnel?
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Five oh. All right, we have a motion to return from executive session.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Any recommendations from executive session?
Uh, no, sir, no recommendations at this time.
Okay, without objection, we are adjourned.